Next on the agenda is a school presentation. Tonight is going to be a presentation from Lincoln Elementary School. And Principal Briann Hearn is going to give that to us. Thank you. You're welcome.
Good evening. Well, thank you Chair Dogren for having us this evening and Superintendent Gent and all the members of the board. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share a bit about our Lincoln journey this evening. Before we get into the details of what we do each day at Lincoln, I want to share with you how we determined our destination and developed the roadmap for our journey. In his book Start With Why, Simon Sinek explores the importance of clearly understanding and communicating your why before sharing what you do. He says that your why is the purpose, cause, or belief that inspires you to do what you do. As a staff, we understand the importance of starting with our why and took time last summer to individually write our own why statements around being an educator. When you enter our building, you will notice that every single staff member's why statement has been framed and posted throughout our space. Every teacher, custodian, food service professional, paraprofessional, et cetera, has expressed and posted their why statement around being an educator. As we begin each day, these statements are a constant reminder to us of our individual contribution to the greater success of all learners. As all of the statements were being posted, we began to notice a common thread among them. When we compiled all of our individual statements, there were two words that stand out more than any others. Two words that also happened to be a very important part of our district mission statement: engage and empower. In order to understand our journey, it is important that at Lincoln, to know that at Lincoln, our why is to engage and empower all learners to grow and find success. This summer, our leadership team conducted a massive data dive to look at the current state of Lincoln. Much of this data has been shared with you in advance, including assessment data and demographics. And rather than focusing on what needs to be improved, we challenged ourselves as a team to identify the strengths present in our school's data and build upon those strengths. There were many gems within our data, including the increased academic performance and growth of our 70 young scholars. You may remember them from last year's presentation. This group demonstrated nearly double the percentage of proficiency of their peers on last year's MCA exams. Analyzing this data reaffirmed our longstanding belief that when we identify and nurture potential in students, they outperform our greatest expectations. After digging into data and stating our why, we then determined what could be considered appropriate evidence of implementing our beliefs at Lincoln. This led to our three target page goals. And our three goals are on the screen. By the spring of 2018, 80% of all students will have accelerated growth on star reading and star math assessments. By the spring of 2018, 80% of all students will have zero to one office discipline referrals. And 90% of all students will have fewer than 10 absences for any reason. Once we were clear about our why, we did extensive brainstorming as a staff around how we will show up each day for students, families, and one another. In order to create engagement and empower all stakeholders, we developed four statements that summarize how we will approach our work this year. At Lincoln, we actively seek each student's strengths and nurture their talents as demonstrated by their engagement. We build positive relationships dedicated to student success. We use data to set goals with students and plan purposeful learning. And we expect all students to communicate about their learning. Next, we created our target page, which includes our plan for what we do to engage and empower students, families, and staff. From instructional strategies to budget, from social-emotional learning to family engagement, our target page guides all decisions around the work we do each day at Lincoln. Each strategy listed on our target page, or what we do at Lincoln, is like a slice of the big picture pie. While there are eight strategies listed, they are only effective for students when we align them with a clear plan for success. Our Lincoln roadmap, shown on the right, is a guide that helps us keep an eye on the big picture as we make decisions that directly impact students on a daily basis. I'd like to take some time now to give you a glimpse into what we do at Lincoln to meet the needs of all learners, to share a bit about our eight target page strategies and how they look in action. At Lincoln, we incorporate critical and creative thinking strategies. As we looked at our academic data from last year, we noticed that our performance on MCA and star assessments was significantly higher among those who participated in our Young Scholars program. Our leadership team members promptly wanted to know what is going on in the confines of that space. Upon digging in, we realized that the Young Scholars program focused on encouraging critical and creative thinking strategies, which could be applied to all settings, both inside and outside of school. In other words, our young scholar's teacher wasn't teaching math or literacy; she was teaching students to engage in unfiltered thinking. Supporting and encouraging this type of thinking has been a focus in our entire building. You'll notice above several examples of the utilization of thinking maps, which are intended to take abstract thoughts and translate them into a concrete format. Brain research tells us that thinking maps help us identify patterns and relationships in thinking. The top two examples: kindergarten students are using a thinking map to interact with a story from their literacy unit. On the bottom, older students create a double bubble map to identify similarities and differences in characteristics from a reading passage. On the bottom right, co-teachers are using a tree map to visualize and plan for an upcoming reading unit. At Lincoln, we display student work publicly. Our students and staff are incredibly proud of the work they do each and every day. We have made a concerted effort to line our halls and spaces with student work this year. As you walk around our building, you will notice that there are very few mass-produced artifacts at Lincoln. Rather, you will see a variety of student work, both academic and social-emotional, to represent who we are and what we do each day. We want every single student to view him or herself as an important, well-represented part of our community. At Lincoln, we provide daily meeting, classroom activities, and frequent individual connections with a focus on getting to know one another. We know that students need to feel safe and loved before they are ready to learn. Because of this, we have built in specific opportunities for connection among all in the building. The first 20 minutes of our day are kicked off with our Lincoln pledge, where everyone in the building shares in reciting a pledge written by Lincoln students and staff. Then, we lead into our morning classroom meetings, where students greet one another, participate in shared community-building activities, and interact with a morning message about their day. Staff members who do not have their own classroom push into classrooms to better connect the entire group and set social-emotional goals with individual students each day. Lincoln Elementary has a high rate of mobility historically. Because of this, it is critical that all those new to our building feel safe and loved. Our school counselor orchestrates a student ambassador program, where fellow students take our new friends on a tour of the building, getting to know the physical layout better. While on this tour, they carry a passport with photos of important staff members who sign off once they've gotten to know our new student. We take photos of students and staff new to Lincoln each week and post them on our Welcome New All-Stars Board near the office. At Lincoln, we celebrate academic and social-emotional successes. Oftentimes, we can get so wrapped up in our goals that we forget to celebrate the successes we experience along the way. We are constantly monitoring our three-target page goals. Each month, our goals board in the hall is updated with our performance from the past month. We celebrate as a staff when we hit those goals and reflect on ways to improve on the goals that may have just been out of reach. Students are honored at trimester celebration assemblies three times per year for their academic, social-emotional, and attendance performances. Families participate in three family visit days throughout the year, where they join their child in his or her classroom to be part of the learning experience for an hour that day. Each week, we take a photo with our 16 Students of the Week, who demonstrate commitment to our school-wide culture of be kind, be safe, and be your best. At Lincoln, we complete star progress monitoring and goal-setting each month in reading and math. Formative assessment and feedback can be an incredibly powerful strategy to improve performance in many areas. Because of this, we are working to give continued feedback to students and staff around their performance on mutually agreed-upon goals. We kick off our year with family goal-setting conferences and continue monitoring progress in each classroom on these goals throughout the remainder of the year. Above, you can see two fifth graders checking Avid binders and giving feedback about performance. As a staff, we utilize Equity dashboards to determine our progress toward meeting our target page goals. Each dashboard disaggregates performance on academics, attendance, and behavior based on a variety of demographics. We tie this dashboard directly into staff reflections on their performance via the Thoughtful Classroom Teacher Effectiveness Framework. Staff members have an opportunity to reflect on and collaborate with colleagues around goals they've set for themselves throughout the year on a monthly basis. At Lincoln, we clearly communicate, post, and interact with content and language objectives. Much like the creation of a meeting agenda, students are able to focus their brains and better prepare for learning when adults have clearly defined content and language objectives for upcoming learning. Our staff have participated in collaboration throughout the year on writing purposeful content objectives about what students will be learning, and language objectives around the method of demonstrating their understanding. All professional development begins and ends with an interaction around content and language objectives, much like all learning in classroom settings. At Lincoln, we embed opportunities for reflection on learning. All too often, we get caught up in implementation without reflecting on the effectiveness of the strategies we're choosing. At Lincoln, we've placed an emphasis on regular opportunities for reflection on learning. Using PAPA's taxonomy of reflection, we work to move from recapping what's been done to truly analyzing its effectiveness and considering applications for future learning. In the photo on the top left, staff members reflect on a thinking map they recently completed with their students, considering implications for next steps. On the right, a teacher facilitates an individual reflection with a student around finding text evidence. Reflection has become the norm at Lincoln, ensuring that we take a deep look at the impact of every strategy embedded. At Lincoln, we implement discussion protocols. We truly believe that learning is in conversation. We have worked this year to move from teacher talk to student talk around learning in classrooms. Students participate in a variety of discussion protocols each day in classrooms, from basic turn-in talks with a partner, to A/B buzz, to musical shares, and more. Student voice is moving to the center of learning. This goes for staff as well. Above, you can see our staff members reflecting on a recent book study passage from Yvette Jackson's Pedagogy of Confidence, and how the information impacts their practices with students. At Lincoln, we've been purposeful around planning and alignment in order to build synergy in our community around our common goals. This focus has been key to improving engagement in meeting these goals and empowering students, staff, and families to reflect on next steps. So how are we doing? Well, currently, we are making great strides in meeting our goals. The first goal on our target page is that 80% of students will demonstrate accelerated growth on star reading and math. We are using an aggressive measure for this goal, setting accelerated progress at roughly 20 points of star growth per month, depending on grade level. Typically, students demonstrate around eight to 10 points of growth per month, leaving them on track for one year's worth of growth. Even though the majority of Lincoln students are performing at or above typical growth, we are committed to ensuring all students are on track with their grade-alike peers, keeping us dedicated to that 20-point growth goal. You can see that our growth goal for star reading has increased from 44% of our students reaching that accelerated goal in October to 54% in November. And we actually just calculated our numbers for December today, and as of this afternoon, we are at 61%. And our math numbers will be in by the end of our break. Using office discipline referrals as the measure, 88% of our students are demonstrating social-emotional success this year. Our students are telling us that they feel as though they are seen and heard in our building, allowing them to be fully engaged in learning. At this point in the year, 100% of our active students have missed fewer than 10 full days of school for any reason. We are continuing to engage families and keep open, positive lines of communication in order to partner in the education of all children. I'd like to wrap up by maybe sharing a video.
Yes.
Yes, sharing a video.
We have a workaround here.
Fantastic.
With the audio. We're gonna need some teamwork here.
Okay.
So, let's see here. So, if you want to push play.
I will.
At the same time that I push play on here, we're gonna get this to work.
All right. One.
Are you ready?
Two, three, play. Let's kick off a great day with our Lincoln pledge. I may not have pushed it at the right time.
Here we go. Let's try this again. All right. Ready?
All right.
Try it again.
One, two, three, push. Let's kick off a great day with our Lincoln pledge. Today, I ask you to engage in your success story. You are empowered to participate in greatness each and every day.
We read books, we do projects, we... For morning meeting, we're talking about different ways we can problem-solve situations. We're really working on gratitude and thankfulness and all of those wonderful skills that children and people in general need to have in order to get along with one another and be successful.
My co-teacher and I are working side by side. It's time for us to model the vocabulary or the objective for that day in reading time. And so, in them seeing that modeling, they are empowered to use the same vocabulary, to talk about their job for the day, and it empowers them to go then in small groups.
So, we start in kindergarten at Lincoln, empowering our students to create their own robots using KIBO. And they have to create algorithms using blocks. And they start to learn a programming language before they even have to know how to read. We don't have to use any devices other than the robot. We talk about engineering and building, and if they could create any kind of robot, what would they create?
We like to keep people busy by giving them a lot of different options. And when they're working on their motor skills and doing something that they like, those motor skills are going to help them with their academics. And everything is all kind of bound together so that it will carry over into their life.
The Zones of Regulation is a curriculum geared towards helping students regulate their actions and recognize when they are in different zones. Each zone is represented by a different color. The zones give staff and students a common language to use. Students learn how to use strategies to stay in a zone or move to another zone.
One of the best ways I've learned how to engage students here at Lincoln, I really tried to build relationships with them. I do take more of a positive approach when I first meet them. I try to know all the students' names in the building, and I've been doing pretty good so far of learning names. I greet them every morning with a high five or just say hi.
And with parents, we engage them through PTA, volunteering in the schools, especially in the lunchroom, in the classrooms, and to help out with field trips and everything.
Love my job. I'm in the lunchroom doing what I do, but I'm engaging with these kids.
Well, what we're here to do is actually bring different parents into the building. So, basically, we find out what the parents need and try to deliver it right here from the school.
Parents and students who are new in the country, who doesn't know the systems, so they... We teach them, and we help them, so they can engage the system.
The Young Scholars is an amazing program at Lincoln, where students are coming to class excited about learning. They're engaged in learning strategies that helps them with higher-level ways of thinking, where they can take that back into the classroom and apply it to what they're currently working on.
Think Scholars has helped me a lot by telling me that I can do things and telling me that I can be creative if I just try hard.
What we did was acted out a story that we had been reading with the kids. The kids took parts, the character parts. And then, part of that acting out was making a feast together, because the story was stone soup. So, we made stone soup together.
We all sit in a circle. We're all equals. We all get the chance to talk and share things going on in our life. We build community by playing games together, sharing things from home together, talking about certain questions that I'll pose at the beginning, like, what's your favorite thing to do outside of school?
Lincoln Proud!
Lincoln Proud!
Lincoln Proud!
Lincoln Proud!
Lincoln Proud!
Thank you. So, thank you for the opportunity to get to share a little slice of our journey with you this evening. And, you know, it's one page in our Lincoln story, but we're excited about the partnerships that we forged with our families and truly appreciate the opportunity to serve some of the best kids in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Briann. We'll open it for questions. Does anyone have a question? Monica?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. So, you said that you're focusing on strengths. Can you list them, please?
List our strengths of our students. Do we have... How much time can we have? Well, I would say our kids are absolutely creative thinkers. They're very independent learners. If we provide them with challenges, they step up to the plate. Our students really thrive in the arts. They're very expressive, interested in performing, very passionate about technology. Any technology we put in front of them, they're teaching us by the end of that week. So, we just see a number of things: leadership roles. If we can come up with a role, they will eat it up as quickly as we possibly can.
Bruce?
Thank you very much. I just want to reflect a moment here on a couple of things. We're talking about that Lincoln journey. You know, I go here a lot because it impacts me. It means a lot to me. But I would like to just say that there are generations of teachers, a long time ago, that taught me and other people like me, and they would be extremely proud. I'm just thinking of them right now. And in that... And in those days, the tools that teachers had were different. But the projects that they were working on were different kinds of projects, too, the students. I just want to say that this journey that you're talking about, I hope for these kids, that journey from kindergarten through sixth grade, that 50 years after sixth grade, or 60 years after sixth grade, that they'll think back as to the importance of the people that impacted their lives. And that's one reflection I'm just think that I want to share with you, please, Briann. Also, I was delighted to look at, in the video here, I saw some faces that I knew from Promised Neighborhood. A number of people from Promised Neighborhood. That community engagement organization, working with students from Lincoln, Tullahi, and South. It was good to see those people that I see at regular meetings at Promised Neighborhood now in the schools, doing the passionate work that they talk about at the meetings at Promised Neighborhood. I'm always interested in, and I look through this data very carefully, and I'm always interested very much in our achievement data, our academic data, working hard to understand it. And when I need to have some questions answered, I can find people on the board, and I find people in administration, and our executive directors, and our principals that can help me with that. When I look at this, I'm seeing what we're interested in here is that we're having success with all of our students. When I look at the demographic charts of Lincoln and then see this star growth, and according to the goals that you're setting, that means to me that we're reaching all students in our district. All students. And that is very satisfying to me as a board member. So, those are my reflections, and I appreciate very much your taking the time to bring it to us. Thank you. I'm a former... Well, I guess everybody figured that out. I'm a former Lincoln student. Yes, I am. I'm gonna put that on, too. This is Christmas. So, you know, when I watched that video, I walked through those doors. I don't know what this means to everybody up here. I don't know if it means anything to anybody else, but it means everything to me. And I walked through those doors and was greeted by other principals and teachers and custodial staff and our mothers. My mother and all of her friends were there with some frequency in the PTAs and the carnivals and everything else, all the things that went on. That school impacted the lives of many, many people a long time ago. And it's the same impact that's happening at Discovery and Madison and Clearview and Oak Hill and Westwood and I'm leaving...
Tullahi.
Kennedy and Tullahi, of course. It's happening across our district, and it's a collective impact that I keep looking for across our district. We're delight in the individual schools' reports. But when we can see that that is collectively being reported out, it means a lot to this person. And there you go. That's how I feel about this. Thank you very much.
Bruce?
Briann, I would just echo that, too. A great report. I really appreciate the approach you took with your report and the focus of your report and how you start your year at Lincoln, examining first why we are educators and keeping those statements up as guides throughout the school year. Because I would have bet, I would bet that sometimes during the year, teachers need to be reminded, why is it that I'm an educator and doing this? But what really struck me was your statement, actually, your whole presentation, but your statement that students are being seen and heard. There's a new report that's just coming out, in fact, I think we're going to be discussing it this evening, called Reimagine Minnesota, which, in fact, you were at the meeting, was that last night or whenever?
Yes.
By a number of school districts from in the Twin Cities area that, because of a number of factors, decided to get together and talk about, how do we reimagine education in Minnesota so that all kids can be successful? And one of their key points was to meet with students themselves and listen to the messages that they got from students. And I don't remember the exact wording, but I think they summarized it, the comments from the kids, as "See Me, Hear Me." And clearly, that's something that you're doing at Lincoln, and it is vital to building in these students a strong belief in their own abilities to succeed, which is the first step, and of course, probably the most important step to their ultimate success. So, as I suggested, as we looked at this reimagine-
So as I suggested, as we looked at this reimagine Minnesota plan, I think St. Cloud is a little bit ahead of many of these school districts in terms of our approach with our diverse student population, and I think what you just told us today reinforces that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jerry?
So I can't say that I, I attended Lincoln, but since we're telling our Lincoln stories, my son is a, is a, what, 3rd grade graduate of Lincoln. We used to be at K through 3, and I taught there three days a week, 2nd graders, and one day a week in kindergarten, and so all of those halls, I, I remember. And what I wanted to say about that is not to brag that I used to teach there as a volunteer, but the most, one of the most valuable experiences in my whole life, you know, is my memory of working with those young people. And if, we saw a few volunteers, but you know, I would say to anyone, I've been talking to a partner who's in the community, talking to business leaders and so on, and that they're just full of wrong ideas about what's going on in our school system. Just really unbelievably, and if people would, you know, knock on your door and say, I'd like to spend, as I did, you know, three days a week on my lunch hour with students, some of my students, one of them's a lawyer, one of them's a doctor, one of them a teacher in Little Falls, and we now, every once in a while, see her daughter, so the grandchild of, you know, peers of my grandchildren, and there's just, just, it's tremendously rewarding for, if you volunteer, you'll be welcomed, you'll have a, what could be a life-altering experience to get in there and see what's really going on and work with kids.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? If not, thank you, Brienne.
Thank you very much.
It was a very nice presentation.